Your live.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, November 17th Barrington Select Board Meeting in conjunction with our Planning Board. Could I have a call to order?
Sumaco, present. Capello here.
Manchurk here.
Sakosha here.
And Hardikoff is here. Thank you very much. For those of you that choose to, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask the Select Board for an agenda review and then a vote, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sumaco, aye. Capello, aye.
Manchurk, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Open first is our public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes, 15 minutes in total. If you would like to speak and you are online, we'll begin with you. You can mouse over your screens, click on raising your hand, and you'll be recognized. Seeing as none, I'll move to in-house. Is there anyone who would like to speak in-house for three minutes? Seeing as none, I will close this portion of public comment, recognizing that there will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting. Up first for public hearings and invited guests, a joint meeting with the Planning Board. Our invited guests are here with us. And Connor, I will turn this over to you to introduce everyone.
Terrific. Thank you. We'll start with a roll call of attendance to the Planning Board meeting. So, Mr. Chair, if you would.
John Driscoll in here, present.
Turn microphone mute. John Driscoll, present.
Scott Shepard here.
Ronella, present.
Joyce Capello, ex officio on Planning Board, present.
And joining the Planning Board is Town Planner, Ernie Krevlin. So, we have a fortuitous opportunity to gather the Select Board and the Planning Board for a few important topics. The first is a very exciting one, and I want to give some pre-credit to a Planning Board member who isn't on the Planning Board anymore, which is one Jeff Brand, who had the foresight to well-position Barrington for solar zoning. And as a result of his efforts and recent efforts by the Planning Board and the Energy Committee, I'm glad to welcome up to the podium Kathryn Casper and Cindy Hoysington to make a presentation to the joint meeting of the Planning Board and Select Board. Thank you, Scott.
May we take, may we take your picture, ladies? Okay.
You got it. All right.
It's like high school.
It is. Do they know our C P?
I don't know if they know.
Cindy and I have known each other since seventh grade.
Wow.
So, I'm very excited to be here. This is quite an honor. We have been working on a big project, as you know, called Soul Smart, and getting your town to have some wonderful solar ordinances. And I just, can I go through the list? All right. I just want to say thank you to so many people for the hard work that went into this. Your Energy Committee is honestly an example to the entire state. I cannot tell you how many times I reach out and ask, can you guys come talk about what you've done in Barrington? It's incredible. You should be so proud. This is just one more incredible achievement, and I'm really thrilled to be here. So, I'd like to thank Paul Panish, Cindy Hoysington, and Jack Bingham for getting all this going and the hard work they did. All the members of the Planning and the Zoning Board, thank you so much for reviewing, for your ideas and inputs. The RTA, Connor MacIver, and also the Municipal Officer Administrator, Tiffany Cottle, and Jamie Dennison from the Building and Code Enforcement. Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say a special thanks to Paul Panish, who really worked tirelessly on the Energy Committee to get it started and has handed the reins over to me, which is a little intimidating, but I will do the best I can.
You got all the support you need. And you have won the highest honor of anyone in the state of New Hampshire that I know of at this point. So, another reason, there's so many, to be so proud, but that is the Gold Award. And you now have an official Soul Smart Gold Award. Awesome. I don't know if you guys want to.
Do you mind if I figure out?
I think that would be terrific.
All right.
So, why don't you come back this way, and we'll get a picture of the Select Board and Planning Board. You guys can all kind of line up against the back. We'll take a quick picture. Yeah, yeah. So, just walk, walk back that way. I do. I can use yours if you want. Yeah, so you guys can funnel back that way.
Well, we're always saying top. But it doesn't matter.
Somebody should sit down.
Well, I think these people are going to.
Jim, sit down. Sit down. You can be in the front row.
Where does Ron Saint Jean when you need him?
To moderate a photo? I will sit. We'll do this.
He can hold it.
Front and center.
Okay. And then, who is going to hold?
No, I appreciate it. You're so kind, Roger. I take a meeting picture.
Yep.
All right. Got it. All right. Do you want to come over here? Oh, well.
There you go.
That's terrific.
There we go.
All right. Everybody, right here. On the count of three, Soul Smart. One, two, three.
Soul Smart.
All right. Thank you, Joyce. Fantastic.
You also have these handy-dandy hangers, so I, who do I get these to? That would be Tiffany.
Tiffany is in charge of things to do with advertising.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Yes, we evenize our own district.
There you go.
Thank you both for being here. Thank you. So sweet.
On behalf of the Town and Select Board, thank you to the Energy Committee for all the work that they have been doing. It takes many hands to make light work, and there's many progressive things happening in this town, and we're grateful for your work.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on from this topic, the next series of topics relate directly to the Capitol Improvements Program, of which currently the Planning Board is the CIP Committee. One of the topics which this, again, a fortuitous opportunity to bring a conversation between both groups, is a conversation about the future of our Public Safety Building. You all were invited to open house and spaghetti dinner to have a tour of the Public Safety Building from the police and fire personnel to understand and preview what they're here to talk to you about tonight. So, I'd like to bring Chief Joy up to make a brief presentation. I'll get it up on the screen also.
Are you running that, boss?
I can. Nope, I don't.
I don't care. I know what I just said. Stand off aside.
So, the only other introduction that I'll give is the purpose of, the purpose of this conversation is so that the Planning Board and Select Board can give input to myself and the chief and others on the way that we're packaging this up to approach the voters, to spend some money on the Public Safety Building so that we can have the improvements necessary for the operational needs of police and fire into the future. As you know, the Warren article failed in 2024, and so we're very sensitive about approaching this in a way that will be successful. So, I'll leave it at that, and I'll get your presentation pulled up, and we can head that way.
So, one of us was not surprised in 2024 when that failed.
Yeah.
I think I was the only one that wasn't surprised. The reason you're seeing this now a little bit differently, up until this point, we've presented everything, and I'm waiting for information up there, we presented everything in regards to a renovation. That was how it was presented in 2024. That's how all the legwork started back in 2024. I think we're doing ourselves a disservice if we focus solely on a renovation. There's a number of reasons for that. Financial's one of them. I think day-to-day operations, it's hard to overlook that. If we go forward with a renovation as proposed now, that's going to be a significant hit to operations for not just the Police Department, more so for the Fire Department. And I wish my brothers from the red side were here, but I'm going to try to do them justice in that. So, if we look at this picture just real quick, the entire right-hand side is the fire bay. We know this. But if you don't, that's the fire bay. The proposal that we found most favorable when we did this the last time was to essentially blow the top off that entire right section, go up and work over. So, the Fire Department would be taking over up. We would shift over with some more modifications to walls and whatnot. That's going to be a tremendous hit to operations. The Fire Department's not going to be able to house their equipment. They're going to have to move. In the end, you're putting another Band-Aid on, which, again, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, I'm not sure I can impose that at this point, on top of the operational issues. We've outgrown, y'all have seen the inside of the building on both sides of the house. You know what we're dealing with. We can't create space out of nothing. Yes, we can go up, but I'm still not sure that that solves all the problems into the future. And if we're going to throw several million dollars at this, I think we need to be doing what is fiscally right for the town. However that ball falls, I'm happy to go along with. In the end, if the numbers work for renovation and not a building, great, let's do it. And we'll figure it out from the fire and police side. But I think by just focusing on a renovation and not looking at other options, I don't think we're doing the taxpayers the service that we need to be doing. Just walk away now if you want me to. So, from a funding standpoint, we are looking for $150,000 on the Warren article. I broke down the basics up there, and again, that's subject to change, but I think the $150,000 is a nice round number that gets us to where we need to be. The impact study fee to me is important. There is no reason why we shouldn't be looking at using impact fees to build the new building. One of the main reasons that we need a new Public Safety Building is growth. We're growing. The town is growing. Our staff has to grow as a result. The Fire Department's staff has to grow as a result. This is not entirely the fault of growth in town, but primarily. This building was built in 1999. In 1999, it was Chief Conway, Sergeant DeRozers, Lieutenant Banyan, Sheldon Perkins, Mike Richard, and me, and Scott Young, part-time. So, six of us and a part-timer in that same space that we now have 15 folks in. It just doesn't add up. You had a fully volunteer fire department in 1999. Rick took over full-time in 2001? Anybody? Anybody?
Yes.
2001. That was your first full-time firefighter. Now, you have a full-time chief position as well as four full-time staff members. So, again, both sides of the house have grown. That's a result of growth in town. There's no reason not to let new growth pay for some of that building, in my opinion. But that costs money to get there. So, there's $30,000 there. $30,000 for a space and needs study. Again, this needs to analyze what we need in the future, 20 years down the road. We did a renovation in 2019. You know what we didn't do? Space and needs. Now, in 2025, Jim helped out with his crew blowing the door in that the deputy chief and I couldn't do. But we've done that, and we spent, what, $10-ish thousand on that project? We put $10,000 into a project to quote-unquote "gain space" because you can't gain space. We're not creating anything new. But we turned locker rooms into different locker rooms, moved stuff around, created a new sardines office, got the deputy chief solidified into his office, moved records into the office with Detective Sergeant Barber, took away the female locker room, for lack of a better term. The female locker room is now the female locker room and bathroom. So, they still have a locker room, but they've lost space as a result. Net gain, I have somewhat secure storage. I have a sergeant by ourself. I have a deputy chief by himself, which is where they need to belong. If you're doing investigations, you can't be sharing office space. And I'm tapped on lockers. I have no more room for growth. When we hire new, if we hire new in the next couple of years, either the deputy chief and I'll be moving entirely into our office and out of our lockers, which means there's a rifle unaccounted for somewhere. So, again, if we'd done a space and needs study, we might have avoided some of that. We need to figure out what we're going to do for 20 years down the road, when I'm no longer a thought, and probably many of you won't be dealing with this either. But the next guy 20 years down the road can figure it out. If I can get him to there, I'll be happy. And then, site selection, facilities review, and engineering. I'd rather have an expert tell me what we should be doing. I'm not a builder. I'm not an engineer. I am none of those things. If they tell me that a renovation is fiscally sound and not a new building, fantastic. I'll go down that road. But somebody smarter than I am should be making that decision.
And relative to site selection, the top of the list for alternative sites, land the town already owns, would be like up on Ramsdale. And so, that isn't a new thought. But in terms of feasibility for site selection, proofing out those ideas of balancing the impact during a renovation of the current site and the constraints of the current site with the cost at a new site and separating the services, that's what needs to be professionally done. And the money in there would get us to a point, in either path, no matter what makes the most sense, would get us to a point so we can bring a reasonably accurate bond number to voters in the next year. And so, we need to spend some money to do that. We need to get plans drawn up, and so that balances out the rest of that $90,000. Kind of hit this on the intro.
Yeah, I think I hit pretty much everything here.
Yeah, we know justification, history.
I hit most of the history, I believe. Yeah, I know this by heart now. There's your old renovation proposal. Again, it's over and up. So, I, again, I'll hit my space needs real quick. You've all heard them, so I'm not going to belabor the point. Office space, is it a premium right now? Our administrative area, is it a premium right now? Records, locker room, changing areas, we're not in a great space. Again, those of you that have been in the building, you know our bathrooms are over here, and our locker rooms are over here. That can create a problem. Hasn't yet, but it could. If you think you're the only one in the building, and you are showering and changing as if you were the only person in the building, and somebody else comes in the building, that could cause issues. Bunk areas, evidence and file storage, I can't hit this enough. Our file storage right now is shared, half in our break, interview, juvenile prosecution area, the big room with the table where we eat and do everything else, and part of it has been moved into the sardines office, the detective sardines office. Not ideal. Evidence, and again, you've all heard me complain about the evidence situation before. We don't have any airflow. The evidence room, as it stands, I don't want to say is not secure, but it's not secure. If Kalia came in to look at our evidence area, it would not be considered secure, just by the manner of construction. There's a whole lot of marijuana in that evidence room that's just essentially leaking into our breathing space. And we're small to begin with. From a larger Sallyport evidentiary vehicle standpoint, good luck getting a real vehicle in my Sallyport. When we do the tour on Wednesday, I'll be happy to back my current Tahoe Cruiser up to the Sallyport entrance. You can see where that stands. I'll back a Cruiser in there right now and see a Ford Explorer in there. Theoretically, we should be bringing a Ford Explorer into that Sallyport and removing a prisoner from that Ford Explorer to move them directly into booking. Good luck if that individual's noncompliant, because now you don't have space to fight. So, we don't bring the Explorer into the Sallyport. Now, we're outside with a noncompliant prisoner, potentially in a winter storm, and we fall in the snow. A lot of bad issues. From an evidence standpoint, from the garage, if we get anything bigger than what we have, it won't go in there. We just had a bank robbery. Everybody knows this, yes? We seized two vehicles from that bank robbery. One of them was a, for lack of a better term, a free candy van. Guess where that didn't fit? Sallyport. Both those vehicles had to go to the exterior garage to wait for a search warrant. That's not secure. We do the best we can. We secure with evidence tape, but it is not secure. God forbid, we have a more serious crime, a sexual assault or something along those lines, where a van or larger vehicle is a suspect vehicle, and something happens to that case because we had it stored in a nonsecure area. We'll just let that marinate. Armory, juvenile space, sight and sound separation. Anybody that's been in the PD, is there a spot in my police department where you cannot be heard at another spot? And I'll tell you right now, the answer to that is no. So, I'm doing the best I can. I don't have sight and sound separation. The training room, potential for community use and hosting, that was on the docket before, and we maintain that that's a great idea. We want a large room such as this, both the community use, also to host trainings. I just sent my detective sergeant and my deputy chief to their final FBI leader class, to the tune of about $800 a head. All my supervisors go to all three classes. If we can host those classes, my people can go for free. I don't have a place to host right now. And then, again, public emergency use in mind for natural disasters. This is our EOC. This was built for our EOC. If we actually activate the EOC, we have much smaller rents that we don't actually need to come here and use the EOC for, but it would be good to have that availability. Bond impact fees and alternative funds, we've hammered this over and over. Operational plan, determine if renovation and new construction meets operational needs. I've already hammered that into oblivion. Day-to-day work conditions, I'll beat you with that, and considering the growth of both departments. You already know what my staffing looks like. I don't want to, again, I don't want to speak to the Fire Department. They're also going to grow. This also needs to take into consideration the potential for regionalization that we're looking at, knowing that Barrington is probably going to be what houses a lot of that operation because we're central and larger than the other communities involved. In conclusion, obviously, the building hasn't increased where everything else in town has. The foundation in 2018 was a Band-Aid. We said it was a Band-Aid. Bob stood here, sorry, Chief Williams stood here and told you it was a Band-Aid. I told you the same thing when I did things this year. Thus far, we haven't changed anything. We are going to need to grow with the community, and that's where we're at. Y'all have seen it. I don't need to tell you because you've all experienced it.
How do you all feel about this proposal and this idea to bring $150,000 Warren article to voters in 2026 with a nod at a bond proposal in 2027 for the building? What do you feel like is missing? What do you feel like would lead to your support and support from voters on this approach?
I'm of the opinion that providing the public with the number of times that you have had to conduct interviews with juveniles in the building while at the same time holding a potential perpetrator in the same space while having your interviews, I think it's important for the public to understand that. I think it's important for the public to understand that our corridors for Route 9 and 125 potentially expose us to the trafficking coming out of Massachusetts all the way up into Rochester, and that your officers are often encountering potential lethal drugs that can kill them.
Without going too far into depth to hammer on that, we just had a significant theft in town, which the TA is aware because I reached out to him for camera footage. That theft involved a very expensive OHRV from one of our dealers in town. That investigation has reached as far at this point as Rhode Island, and the individuals involved in that ring reached further than that. So, Little Barrington is not Little Barrington, and I know some people want to keep believing that. The people that are coming up through are running dope from Mass to Maine across 125 because they want to avoid 95. But they're also coming up here to hit Dover, Barrington, and other communities, and then retreating back south as they go.
I think it's important that you provide those numbers.
Other pieces of feedback?
I think it's pretty well laid out. I mean, I don't think there's any stone that's not unturned that, you know, can't be looked at and would back it up and some, but.
Scott had something, and then John.
John, you go first.
One of the security things that really surprised me, I'm former military police. You had a bench with handcuffs built in.
Yes.
If, if an officer were to walk by, and it'd be possible for that person to grab your gun.
So, yeah, you'll note that on the entry and exit points from that booking room, have no firearm signs.
Yeah.
We have blue lights. That's one of the changes we made. We had a blue light on the exterior, the building on the exterior door. We put one on the Sallyport door. Nobody should be going through that.
Through there with their weapon.
With their weapon. However, patrol room, as you saw, is right off the booking room. If we get the full-blank call and somebody is in the patrol room, what are the odds that they're running out through the front of the office? And I'll tell you, it's pretty slim. And am I going to write somebody up from running through the booking room to go to an full-blank call? No, I'm not. I'm absolutely not. But that potential exists because of that.
Right.
Now, in theory, again.
Your officers know it, but if you have visited State Police or something, maybe it just breathes through.
It can absolutely happen.
Please.
Yeah, I was wondering if it would make sense to include sizing of our police and fire force within this as a definitive endpoint?
That's part of that 30,000 space and needs for the future.
It'd be good to write that in because I think that's something that we do need to look at. The other thing is, will we know by the end of next year, when the study's supposed to be done, about regionalization and what its impact will be on us?
We'll know more.
We'll know more. We had a great joint meeting. All three boards unanimously voted to continue down the path of collaboration and start focusing on those long-term goals. One of the later of those long-term goals is a regional fire district. And so, I think what the, what the three communities recognize is, it's, it's going to be, as we move along the collaboration continuum, it's going to start to get difficult with the politics and the decision-making of giving up control and authority. And what you have to keep in mind is, the other two communities, Madbury and Lee, are part of the Oyster River Cooperative School District, which, for smaller communities like Lee and Madbury, their perspective of a regional school district like that is, it doesn't matter how we vote, because however Durham votes is what's going to be decided for the district. And they're not, it's not an incorrect perspective. I was on the school board for a regional school district also, and the outlying towns always felt powerless in the decision-making. And so, some really difficult decisions need to, discussions need to be had relative to how something like that could work. But I think it's unlikely that by the time we need to propose a Warren article to voters, a bond article, that all of those decisions will be made. What is certain is that Barrington, as a 50-square-mile community, will need a station and will need to be able to respond from within the confines of Barrington. And some of the response time mapping that has already been done makes clear that even having the station that we do, we're deficient, pretty significantly deficient in certain areas of town. So, I think the important way to frame this need is very primarily for the Police Department. That has been the need from the beginning. The Fire Department has operational needs, but they're not anywhere near as significant as they are for the Police Department. And so, that's really the headline, and there's certainly unknowns about regionalization or regional cooperation, but we'll know more as, as time goes on, and I think it still makes sense to head in that direction.
Just to follow up, and then I'll give you, I guess my worry would be, just like the last proposal to the town wasn't forward-looking enough. I just worry that we're going to get to through next year and start to build or not, and decide that we're not sized appropriately either. So, I almost wonder, I know you need it, and I support it strongly. I do wonder if waiting one more year to get the regionalization space part complete would be worthwhile.
Just a quick question. On the regionalization, Northwood wasn't included. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, we had a proposal in front of the Planning Board for the Coates Farm. That could position, you know, 4% to 5% of our population right on the town line with, with Northwood. So, having them respond, if that project goes forward, you know, they may be in a better position to respond than some of our, you know, our, right here. So, is there any reason they weren't included? Could they be added?
So, excellent question. It's important, when we talk about regional collaboration, that we have very strong mutual aid agreements with all of our neighboring communities, very strong and very successful. There are countless examples of emergencies where our mutual aid partners are getting to the scene quicker than we are because of geography, because of the, and so, this regional cooperation isn't in place of our existing mutual aid agreements. The regional cooperation has a lot more to do with the operations of a fire department. We have, when you're a size like Barrington, your leadership is a, is a working leadership, just like in the, in the police side. And as we're evolving and growing, you're, and we found that it's difficult, when you try to hire for a chief, to hire somebody to be an administrative chief, to do all the budgeting and the politics and decision-making, to hire an operational chief who's going to respond to all the calls when they're at the station, and also be the chief that is looking ahead at the evolution of the fire service, the fact that people aren't entering the service, and our call population is aging out through attrition and not being replaced. So, this is a very dynamic experience, not unique to Barrington. And so, the value of a regional cooperation isn't, isn't in place of our mutual aid agreements, but it's taking and saying, hey, maybe Barrington, Lee, and Madbury don't each need a fire chief. Maybe they need one administrative chief, and maybe they need a training officer who's just focused on training. Maybe they need an inspection officer who's just. Maybe they need an inspection officer who's just focused on inspections of all the commercial buildings. So it's pooling resources for that purpose, which has benefits to response and response time and things like that. But the mutual, it isn't in place of mutual aid. It aims to benefit everything, but not just response time. And the last thing I'll say about that is our hope in starting small with regional cooperation like that is that it's something that, if it works and if it makes sense, is spreads. Whether that spreads in the district itself, or that idea spreads and pockets of communities recognize that maybe it's more efficient to go at this as a collective that makes sense. And now the mutual aid partnerships might not be between Barrington and Northwood, but maybe it's a mutual aid partnership between the Madbury-Lee-Barrington District and the Northwood-Nottingham Raymond. Excuse me. So does that answer your question? Okay. Please.
Yeah, this is Scott's point. I think this regionalization is, for probably two or three years, is going to be pretty nebulous. The idea is we're going one place, but how we're going to do it exactly, I think is going to be a good ways out. So I think this proposal that the chief's making and the fire chiefs are making makes sense to do it now rather than later, because the regionalization is so far out that trying to start making plans for that today doesn't make as much sense.
Sure. And we have fire and police needs now and growing quickly as well with all the new, I get that.
Anything else on this, please?
So I just want to clarify, for space and need study, you're looking at a joint building, not separating.
Yes, no, maybe. Again, I'll go wherever the stats take me. My.
But they'll be looking at that as well.
Yes, they'll be looking at all the options. My preference always has been is to keep our campuses the same. That's always been where I am. I know that Chief Janelle feels the same way. I'm not sure it's feasible anymore. And again, I'm going to use Ramsdale, just because it's been thrown out there. If I have to move, moving a mile down the road doesn't bother me a whole lot. I'm still in the center. I can still pop down and see Chief Janelle pretty easily. And again, if I do weights and balances on that, we're putting in a new rec center. The ECLC is right there. If I have to move off campus from a public safety standpoint, and we're positioning our new building right next to our two largest populations of little people, I'm okay with that, too. Ultimately, I'd love to stay right where we are and build on the property. I don't think it's possible, given the soil and the wetlands and everything else. But if somebody gives me that option and we can do it, great, happy to. I like public safety being together, but I'm not sure we can anymore.
Please.
Yes, not to belabor the point, but I think this is really important. I do agree with Dan in that I think we need to do this now. I have toured the police department and the fire department. I've been given a tour by Chief Joy himself. And I have worked in district attorney's offices and also US attorney's offices. And there are problems there. And if those problems become even a little bit bigger, our police department's going to be completely hamstrung as far as prosecuting cases. So I think it's really important that we do this now, because we have already watched you struggle to get people. And I can understand why, when you walk into, you know, even anywhere near your evidence storage and you smell marijuana in a police department, are you still pushing your desk out from under the leak in the roof before you leave for the weekend?
I don't, did they leave my office open for the tour? Did they not open the door? It's missing a panel, and yeah, I still kill. Once winter comes, I will move my desk a little bit, because the ice dance.
So in the winter, our police chief is pushing his desk out of the way on the weekends, so that his paperwork doesn't get leaked on. This is not fair to our community, and it's not fair to our public servants. So I think we need to move this forward now.
It did let the bird out that came in through the vent.
Well, that's a relief.
Terrific. Thank you.
Good, thank you, folks.
Moving on, and this is more of a procedural step. You'll remember at the last CIP cycle, we had an opportunity to join the planning board and select board together to jointly adopt the capital improvement program. So at Ernie's leadership, we have updated the CIP with the available information. I mentioned at the beginning that the, some of the topics we're discussing are focused on those bigger infrastructure projects that we need to establish confident funding plans for as we move forward. So those projects are still on here. There's still some items to talk about. Ernie, I don't know if you want to give a brief introduction, then we'll take any questions from planning board or select board members?
Sure. But the capital improvement program that you had in place that had been done previously was a great plan. And all I did was talk with the department heads about what they were looking at and reordering the priorities of the investments that they would like to see happen. So that's all, all the narratives throughout the capital improvement program have been updated. And there was one spreadsheet that you received that has the rankings of the different projects with it. And that's the only spreadsheet that there is at this point. I'll make the updates later on, you know, the rest of them after the adoption, if you do do that tonight.
Ernie, under the highway, it might be helpful to put, some of these are already in progress, and we have the funding worked out for them, like the Old Settlers Road, Culver, and Lakeside Oaks. And it doesn't, you can't really get, I couldn't get that from reading the notes here.
Okay.
And I had a question about public safety boilers. Are those urgent, because we're looking at a renovation or a new building?
Right now, the plan is that those would be upgraded when we address the needs at the building. It's important to have these projects on the CIP, because you don't know what direction you're going to go with something, you know, necessarily. The roof and the boilers, if we can get it done during a project, terrific. But if we get, you know, if we don't end up with support from the voters, then that's something that we're going to have to do with the space that we have. We can't just let everything be deferred maintenance. Anything else on the CIP? So I think we have a quorum of both boards. I think the, maybe a first motion from the select board to recommend adoption of the CIP with no recommended changes. And then it's the planning board's responsibility to adopt the CIP. So start with the select board.
Make a motion to finalize and adopt the 2026 to 2036 capital improvement program as amended.
I have a second from Capiello. Roll call, vote, please.
Tamako, I. Capiello, I.
Maturka.
Sakoshai.
Karakoff, I. Motion carries. You're on, sir.
Okay, I guess I will make a motion to accept the 2026, 2035 CIP. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Shepherd, I.
Howard, I.
Nope.
You want me to vote again?
I do.
All right, Capiello, I.
For the quorum. Terrific. And this represents Ernie undersold it by saying, you know, just minor updates. This is under, this effort is a tremendous step in the direction we've been trending in professionalizing and improving the way that we approach capital improvements planning. And I feel very fortunate that we were able to bring Ernie on at this juncture, as we have these projects upcoming, and to help shepherd us through to what the needs that we have in the community. So it's a tremendous work product and something that will definitely guide our future in Barrington. So thank you on that, Ernie. So one of the, one of the most difficult topics in the CIP over the last four years has been the fact that we are approaching the need to address many millions of dollars of transportation infrastructure projects. And it's difficult, because we've been spoiled in Barrington. We've been incredibly fortunate to secure tens of millions of dollars over the last decade of grant dollars for infrastructure, transportation infrastructure projects. And our, not due to lack of effort, but due to lack of availability, the projects we're left with are not likely to receive a substantial amount of funding. Now, we'll pursue every bit of funding we can get for these projects, but we need to focus on and we need to identify local funding for these projects. And so the issue becomes, we can set cash aside at the rate we have been, which is great for engineering and making shovel-ready projects, but those aren't sufficient to fund these projects in their entirety. We can look at one-time appropriations, but when we're talking over a million dollars, the spike in the tax rate as a result of that becomes difficult for residents. So the option we're left with is bonding these projects. And the challenge with that is, if I propose a bond to fix the culvert in the gully of Tolan Road, where Green Hill Brook goes through, 60% of voters need to vote yes. And if you don't drive on Tolan Road, what do you care if that culvert's replaced or not? Now, yeah, we hope that most of our residents have a community-minded spirit, but when it's their pocketbook, it becomes a different calculus. And so there was an idea a few years ago that we could take these projects that are scattered around town, these infrastructure projects, and we could bundle them together into one request, one bonding request for voters. And we could say, we need $13 million to do all of these projects. Now, we're not going to do all the projects at once. We're not going to draw the entire $13 million bond down at once. But for the purposes of approval, we're going to ask for $13 million, and we're going to sequence the projects as appropriate, as they're ready to go and as need dictates, over a period of years. And so that seems to be a good idea. The planning boards discussed it, the select boards discussed it. And that's a big ask of voters. And it's something that Barrington has never really encountered before in terms of taking a request like that to voters. And so in consultation with the select board earlier this year, what was decided is that if we're really going to do this, we need to have a solid plan to give it the best chance of success. And so at the select board's direction, I put together a communication plan for this potential $13 million bond request in March of 2027. And you all have a draft of it. I sent it to the planning board electronically. The select board has printed copies of it. And I think the cover is a great representation of why we're considering approaching it in this way. These seven blue dots show the seven projects which would be, are proposed to be funded from this transportation infrastructure bond. And they spread across all of Barrington. And so this is the start, right? But I wanted to get this document in front of you all. I want everybody to have an opportunity to review it in detail and to offer feedback. Happy to entertain any discussion tonight. But this is something that I think we need to finalize, and we all need to agree with the cooperation of the advisory budget committee. And as we talk about a capital improvements planning committee, how we can approach this in the most succinct way. So thoughts on that idea in general, the communication plan specifically, or anything else related to those transportation projects?
If we have this ready, can we go for congressional grants for any of this work?
Yes, and there's a whole section on alternative funding. By all means, the goal is to continue creating shovel-ready projects that we can seek out alternative funding in any way that we can. There are some funding programs that haven't dried up that we expect to be eligible for and offset some of the funding. We will continue to pursue FEMA funding for projects as they're available. We will continue to pursue congressionally-directed spending, if that becomes available again. And so all of that would complement, and in some cases supplement, the need for some of this funding. And to the point where maybe even by March of 2027, that amount is reduced, or projects are added, or something like that. So none of this is in lieu of trying to secure alternative funding.
I mean, we will have possible bonding for the public works, so that.
The public safety building? No, this is just transportation infrastructure.
You mentioned earlier that we had not.
It would be changed.
Sorry. You mentioned earlier that the town had not taken on a bond of this size. And in fact, we actually have, but through the school board. We had a $20 million bond in order to construct the middle school, which was done in a way that was extremely forward-thinking and recognized growth within the town. And because of that, we've been able to pay off that bond, not be looking at expanding that building and not running into problems with the usage of it, because we were forward-thinking. I think communicating that that is an example of what happens when you plan and look at that 20-year-down-the-road perspective.
I apologize if I misspoke, but I meant we haven't bonded transportation or infrastructure projects, you know, for the town, as a new concept as it relates to that. But certainly bonding, there are numerous bonding examples in the town that is successful. Any other specific points of feedback? I mean, some of the areas that I think having a set of extra sets of eyes on as we work to finalize this plan are some of the communication strategy and channels. This is on page four of 11. You know, what we're using to meet people where they are. Some of the phasing on the implementation schedule in page five, focusing on making sure we're getting out ahead of the cycles and providing good information. And then in, you know, in taking the time to prepare examples of how we communicate this. You know, the tone and the language used to justify and explain this. You know, the appendices show what newsletter language could be used, how we look at an outline for the webpage, having signs, roadside signs, co-located with these projects to start making awareness available. And then how we might frame some Ask Barrington segments about this initiative. Anything else on this before we move on? Open door on input.
Thank you very much for generating. It's nice to have a defined plan upfront. It's great, thank you.
Terrific. Moving on is a topic that the planning board and select board have both discussed, which was a suggestion by our town planner, in that, given the capital planning needs that we have in the community and the level of development interest we have in the community, it might be worth our effort to consider a capital improvements planning committee, program committee, which isn't the planning board. And the statute allows for that. It allows town meeting to designate, delegate authority to the select board to appoint a CIP committee for the purpose of preparing, adopting, and helping to implement the CIP. This is one of the select board's strategic priorities. They identified in their planned investment key focus area the desire to involve the advisory budget committee in capital planning. And so we've had some discussions at the advisory budget committee level, and there's interest in advisory budget committee members in participating in such project. And so both groups have talked about it, talked about it favorably. If there's any discussion, I think we could entertain that. If not, I think the select board may be ready to make a vote to place an article on the warrant in 2026, asking voters to allow the select board to appoint a CIP committee. Please, Madam Chair.
When you use the term adopting, by that you are indicating that the CIP would no longer require select board approval?
Doesn't currently require select board approval.
So the CIP does not currently require select board approval. It is a, go ahead.
In statute, yeah, that's a statutory, it's a planning board document.
It's a nicety. We go through it, okay.
And I think it will remain that way, especially if the select board is appointing the members.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to place a question on the 2026 warrant to establish a capital improvement program committee with members appointed by the select board per RSA 6745.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mako, I. Capiello, I.
Maturka.
Sakoshai.
Karakoff, I. Motion carries.
Terrific.
Very good.
That concludes the joint meeting portion of the agenda. Thank you, planning board members, for your last two hours of volunteerism.
Do they have to close out their meeting, too?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes, we do, yeah. I'll make a motion, we adjourn the planning board portion of this. Roll call?
Run.
Run. We're done.
Terrific.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
School board liaison report. Do we have any invited guests from the school board present?
I heard for school board member Rick Walker that neither of them were available to attend tonight.
We will move on to library updates. Could we invite the library trustee chair and any other members that she has brought with her to the front?
So as library trustee chair Susan Guardiello and member Melanie Haley approach the table, I will point out the documents you have in your packet and available online. Library. Library trustee chair Susan Godiello prepared a very comprehensive update memo that will help provide the background necessary for the discussion. Also included is a couple of project update spreadsheets for the library building project. And there is a list of action items that the select board will consider once we are here presentation from the library trustee chair and the select board ask any questions that they have. So with that, please--
I'm Susan Godiello. You know me. I'm the library trustee chair, and with me is Melanie Haley, who is the trustee treasurer. So we knew we were going to be talking about money. I thought it would be handy to have the treasurer along. I think if you had a chance to read the update report that I prepared, it sort of speaks for itself, so I'm not going to labor that, other than to say, we are very excited and thrilled with the new library. I hope you've all had a chance to wander the aisles and get to know the staff. The response from the community has been universally positive. And I think one of the-- We have our trustees meeting tomorrow, but we get a report from the library director in advance. And one of the comments she made was, at the end of 2024, we had 4,100 patrons, you know, cards, and at this point, we have over 4,900. So I think that's a testament to the popularity of the library, really reaching out and serving the community. So with-- As you know, I've said before, we were coming in on time and under budget, and at this point, we have a pretty good sense of what those numbers are looking like, and that's what I wanted to share with you in those breakdowns. Connor had suggested, in addition to just giving you the sense of how the money has been spent, that it would be useful for you to look at what we had presented at the time of the vote in 2024, and basically where we've ended up. I didn't put excruciating detail in there, but I think enough for you to get a sense of where we are, and happy to answer, as best I can, any questions you have about the budget.
And there's a big headline here, right? So that number at the bottom of the first document, that $64,000, that's $64,000 that this project came in complete, bills paid, under budget. And I think Susan especially, although there's a team of people, both beside her and behind her through the whole process, but Susan's efforts through this project to working with the construction management team and through the construction project, to bring the project in with bringing a lot of the scope back in that had to be cut out during early budget discussions, and bringing the project in almost $65,000 under budget is a tremendous value to the community. So credit where credit's due, that's a terrific headline of this update. Any questions on the library building project budget update before we move on to more good news relative to rebates?
Looks good. It's great to see the signage go up today. Oh, I haven't-- I haven't been there today. The rare day I haven't been at the library.
Yes. So that's the letters on the building went up? Yeah, we had lots of debates about signage. And originally, the plan was to get a sign like the town hall has, and so on. And the cost to get what we wanted in that, well, it was mostly the granite posts are the biggest expense of those signs. So we kind of kept it back until we settled in and then decided, as people mistakenly sometimes come to the building looking for a vet or a healthcare question, that maybe a sign on the building itself is what we need, and that's where we went that direction.
Medical care.
So the next topic is rebates, which Susan provided great detail in her project update, summarized in the town administrator report. There's a potential next year for $42,000 from the IRS in a solar rebate. The information available right now says that that money should be available, but we all know that there's a lot that can change there. So that isn't money that we should spend at this moment, but the goal will be, as you see in the decisions to be made later, to make some decisions about how that money will be used if received. $10,000 state solar rebate, which has been received, a little over $12,000 in energy efficiency rebates from both HVAC and electricity. And so those rebates create an opportunity for discussion, and what the library trustee chair has provided is details of what the priorities from the library trustees are for both the building project surplus and the rebates that have been generated through the project. And so on the top of page four in the town administrator report, you'll see what those priorities are relative to funding the technology capital plan, which is in the 2026 budget proposal out through 2030, and using the rebates related to the solar project, which was 100% funded by donations, to in some way benefit the library. So those were the priorities identified by the library trustees. Would you like to elaborate on those priorities at all?
No, I think you and I really went through that when we met last week. We certainly understand that money is fungible, and, you know, it can look like just one big pot of money, but it was very important to the trustees that the solar rebates directly benefit the library, even if that means we're really replacing community tax dollars with some of the rebate funds. It really ties it to the library, and that's what's most important.
So if there aren't questions, I think we're ready to start considering some decisions for the select board to make. See, nobody jumping at a question. Please.
Someone's going to ask this question. Why can't we just sit on that money for-- Put that into the general fund?
Which money?
The $64,000 and the monies that we have. That's going to be a question, I think, that needs to be asked, needs to be answered.
And some of those details are available in the decisions upcoming. The $64,000 is made up of two things. First, the capital reserve for the library and community center. The second portion of that is surplus bond proceeds. As it relates to the capital reserve, which is the topic of the first decision, number one for the select board to consider, that language of the capital reserve when it was established limited those funds for the design, engineering, construction, et cetera, et cetera, and expenses needed to populate the building, to enter the building--
To construction, design--
It stops. That timeline stops once they move into the building. And so those funds can't be used for anything else into the future, once the project is closed. And so you can change the purpose of a capital reserve, but that requires a 60% vote. More commonly, you close and reopen a capital reserve. And so the proposal in front of you tonight is to take those dollars, which are already set aside by voters and for a library purpose, and ask voters in two warrant articles, one to close that capital reserve, and two, to add $15,000 of that $28,000 to the library technology capital reserve, which is already existing. And in that case, the technology capital plan, prepared by the library director, is funded through 2030. And so we likely won't see another library technology capital reserve contribution request until 2029 or so, to start planning for the needs coming after 2030. And then the surplus of $13,000 would go to general fund revenue to reduce taxes. So the net impact of those two warrant articles would be $13,000 to the better for taxes.
I'm wondering if it appears that by doing this, we're taking the decision-making out of the residents' hands for that $3,000 per year for five years, and telling them that they've just approved it. And that is my only hang-up with this, is I do not want to appear to be a select board that just made a five-year decision without the voice of the residents.
I don't think you are making that decision, because it would have to be a warrant article for the, that the voters would vote on, to allocate $15,000 of that one of the library construction capital reserve to the technology. So it's really up to the voters. You would just be giving the voters the opportunity to make that.
And if it fails, are they without the $3,000 that they potentially would have had available this year?
They have funding, cash on hand in the capital reserve to fund the next year of the technology capital plan.
Correct. So if this proposal failed to allocate some of those funds to the tech capital reserve, we would be going forward in 2026 with the balance in the account, which is about $5,000. And because we just made so many changes, I think there's only one-- I don't have the tech plan in front of me, but something for less than $1,000, I think, was one addition that needed to be purchased next year. So basically, it would be fine for next year, and would have the next year to go back to an annual allocation.
Questions, comments, concerns, anyone? No. I guess at this time, I'd make a motion to place the two questions on the 2026 warrant, first to close the library and community center capital reserve, and the second contingent on approval of the first, to add $15,000 to the library technology capital reserve, recognizing that that funding is through 2029, and that we would not see another capital reserve request towards this program or in front of our residents until 2030?
Well, I don't expect that to be true. This select board can't prevent any future select board or petition warrant article to add money to a capital reserve. And so I think it's important, for the purposes of the discussion, that there is mutual understanding and expectation that funding this technology capital plan eliminates the need in the next number of years to contribute to the technology capital reserve. It funds the plan through 2030. I think it's more likely, if no other changes happen that impact decision-making, that the next technology capital reserve contribution might be requested in 2029 to start planning for that next batch of replacements. But I don't-- This select board can't prevent a future select board from sponsoring a warrant article if there's need, if need arises, but that's the intent of this decision--
Understood. Do I have a second?
If you're striking that phrase. Or do we need to vote on this one and then rephrase it?
So make a motion to place two questions on the 2020-- I'll revise the motion. Make a motion to place two questions on the 2026 warrant, first to close the library and community center capital reserve, and the second contingent on approval of that first is to add $15,000 to the library technology capital reserve. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Simak, aye.
Capello, aye.
Inshrek, aye.
Seco, aye.
Hartikoff, aye. Motion carries. Next up is your solar rebate discussion.
So this proposal before the select board is addressing the priorities identified by the trustees to take that $10,000 state solar rebate, which was already received, and use that to fund $10,000 worth of operating budget expenses in 2026 from library building maintenance. This line, as you know, funds in part the utilities and electrical costs of the library in 2026. There is still some unknown, based on the solar panels that were installed. The net increase to the library budget as a result of this is about $10,000. And so this would offset that proposed operating budget increase, reducing the 2026 operating budget proposal by $10,000, and again, consistent with the priority identified by the trustees of using those rebate dollars specifically towards the trustees. I should also mention that the Advisory Budget Committee reviewed these proposals and recommended all of them unanimously.
Very good.
They just had an opportunity, too, because it was--
Questions, comments, concerns, anyone? If not, at this time, I'd make a motion to hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 3195-B on December 1, 2025, to consider accepting and expending the library state solar rebate in the amount of $10,000 for the purpose of 2026 library building maintenance costs, and to reduce the 2026 library building maintenance operating budget request by $10,000 to $12,861. Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Simak, aye.
Capello, aye.
Inshrek, aye.
Seco, aye.
Hartikoff, aye. Motion carries. And I'm assuming that the Advisory Budget Committee found it appropriate to apply the $42,000 IRS rebate to operating and reduce the budget by that as well?
No, not the last part. We can't reduce the budget because we don't know if we're going to get it. But what this proposal does is it takes and says, if in 2026, we apply for and receive these $42,000 of, approximately $42,000 of an IRS solar rebate, that those $42,000 will supplement $42,000 of expenditures in the 2026 library operating budget. So, you know, take employee wages. As a, for instance, the $42,000 would be spent on employee wages, and that would create a $42,000 surplus in the operating budget, which would be returned to voters through unassigned fund balance at the end of the year when the operating budget lapses. The challenge with reducing the budget is we don't know if we'll receive the dollars. The challenge with making other decisions are the-- There are just a lot of unknowns. And so this-- There are a few ways that you can get monies back to taxpayers, and this is the most direct that also satisfies the priorities of the library trustees of making sure that those rebate dollars end up benefiting the library. Again, those were donations, so this kind of balances those, getting the money back to voters and spending the money on library priorities.
Is there a reason we're making this decision before we even know if the $42,000 is going to be received? Why wouldn't we make these decisions further down the road?
It-- So there will be decisions to be made further down the road. If the money is received, it will require, through RSA 3195-B, the select board to hold a public hearing. I think for the purposes of discussion, what I recommended, that we have these discussions collectively. So it isn't so with eyes wide open. We understand all of the monies that are on the table and all of the monies that are possible, so we can make decisions with all of that information in mind. So it's-- This decision is, you know, says to take the steps necessary and plan. It has much more to do with giving staff direction as we start to look ahead to 2026. What is the plan for those dollars? And so I think there's value in establishing that plan now in conjunction with the other rebates, but certainly if the select board would like to defer and wait to see what the needs are, then you can delay any decision. But I think from the trustees' perspective, their priority is to see that these dollars are spent to benefit the library somehow, because there are donations for the solar project.
Sure. So I think for planning purposes, I would move forward. I would make a motion to treat the surplus library bond proceeds of around $35,250 as community center renovation contingency through the end of that--
That's the wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of--
I'm on page four.
Yeah. That we make a motion to take the steps necessary and plan on utilizing the IRS solar rebate, if received, to offset the 2026 library operating budget expenditures, under the understanding that the library trustees will not spend from that surplus in 2026.
I have a quick question before anyone seconds that. You're about to discuss library staffing changes. Are you expanding the FTEs at the library?
No, actually, we're reducing--
Excellent. Good.
No, I'll second that. Can I add one comment? Because when I was reading over that note, just something came up in the last week. All the bathrooms weren't working. Everything was plugged. It turned out the septic tank was full. The-- An alarm had not been connected up. Anyway, so now we've learned, okay, we need to probably have the septic tanks pumped four times a year. Did we include that in our budget for next year? No, we didn't know at the time.
I don't think you'll need it pumped four times a year.
Pumps were not hooked up.
No, no, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it just raised the question in our mind of, we don't know. We haven't been there a year yet. We don't think things are going to go wrong, but we don't really know. The building, anything related to the building and the construction is under warranty for a year or so.
Right.
That's good. But-- And I only wanted to bring this up because if something big happened that was not included in the warranty, and it happened next year, and the funds became available, we'd want to be able to talk with the town about using some of that solar money to, for maintenance repair, that we are not-- You know, we don't have an incident account that's an emergency fund for us.
I have a motion from select person Capello. Do I have a second? A second from Mr. Inshrek. Could I have a roll call, please?
Simak, aye.
Capello, aye.
Inshrek, aye.
Seco, aye.
Hartikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Nope, there's one more.
I tried to--
Sorry.
So this one relates to the second part of your question from earlier, Danin, which is the surplus from the unspent bond-- is the surplus from the unspent bond proceeds. And so I have a call tomorrow with a bond counsel to understand fully what can and can't happen with those bond proceeds. And so there's about $35,250 remaining in the, the bond surplus for this part of the discussion. And so one thing that those dollars definitely could be spent on, aside from just being revenue or offsetting future expenditures, which I suspect is likely the alternative solution, is that those could be spent on the community center project as contingency, because the bond was approved for both projects. And so the proposal to the Select Board right now is to take and just set aside that $35,000 for right now as contingency for the community center project until the conclusion of that project, and then make a future decision for any amount that's left over at the time. Additionally, there are rebates that, there are separate rebates which currently exist, that the library trustee priorities have been met, but based on the prior decisions of the Select Board. And so right now, there's about $12,000 available. There's still surplus revenue available from the state solar rebate for this building and the IRS solar rebate for this building. And so what we took to the Advisory Budget Committee was, was a proposal to say, let's use some of these unanticipated revenues to reduce the operating budget we need to propose to voters in 2026. Now, you don't want to do that with expenditures that you plan to have every year, but if you have one-time expenditures, where the budget's just going to go up for one year, and you can just scrape those off and identify a revenue source to fund those priorities that you're going to have to pay for anyways, then that reduces your need to increase the budget in the next year. You'll remember, we did this with the ARPA funds a couple of years ago. This was credit to the Finance Administrator, Amy Doherty, for having this idea. And what we did is we saw elections is a great example, where we go in Barrington from having one election, to three elections, to one election, to five elections, to one election, because of the amount of elections in a year. And that budget swing is pretty significant. To go from one to three elections, it's about $20,000 more to run that additional election. So the proposal to the Select Board is to use a portion of those $12,000 in rebates, in conjunction with other unanticipated revenues the Select Board's already collected, pull those $20,000 out of the election 2026 budget proposal, which is a one-time expenditure, and fund those from these unanticipated revenue, like we did with the ARPA funds. So those are the two proposals wrapped up in the last motion for the Select Board to consider.
So this is not making the funds available to the community center build out to do any additional work?
No. So it would become contingency. So the budget that the Select Board reviewed in the scope of that project had about $300,000 in ad alts, or additional project scope that wasn't included in the budget. And so those, those projects have continued to be on the back burner. There have been some unanticipated needs during construction, which has used some of the contingency that the project has had budgeted, like asbestos in the floor and stuff like that. And so this would just be that additional insurance policy for contingency for the remainder of the construction project and any unknowns that may come up during that process, or priorities from the ad alt list.
Questions, comments, concerns, anyone? If not, I would make a mo-
Make a motion to treat the surplus library bond proceeds in the amount of $35,250 as community center renovation contingency through the end of that project, and hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 3195-B on December 1st, to consider accepting and expending the library project energy efficiency rebates of $12,000 as well. All right, second. Roll call, please.
Semaco, aye. Capiello, aye.
Inshrek, aye.
Seco, aye.
Hardicoff, aye. Motion carries. Let's talk library staffing. I love to hear FTE reductions.
Well, it's, I, I don't know the number of FTEs, but as I laid that out, we made a couple changes over the past couple of years, actually, that in, in order to sort of try to, I'm going to say, stop the revolving door that we were going through, really over the past, I think, four or five years. We were returning a lot of money to the town because we had so many vacancies in library assistants and the, the technology library assistant position as well. So as we looked at this point going forward, our ILL library assistant resigned back in June, and we left that position vacant, and decided to add the ILL responsibilities and other general sort of responsibilities to the tech person and make her full-time. We were certainly at risk of losing that position. It's a market that I've, I guess I'd say, that person probably wouldn't have very much difficulty in getting a, a job elsewhere for full-time, given the responsibilities of the position. In any event, we decided to make that shift. We went through the summer with that staffing, and really by the end of the summer, found that we really did need some hours of a library assistant position, which is the person who is working at the front desk, working with patrons, and of course, reshelving all those materials. When you see the volume, that our increased volume of circulation, all that stuff has to come back and then get shelved as well. So we, I think, as of last June, before we made that change, we had something like 100 and, oh, I'm trying, I can't, I don't have it in front of me, the numbers. But basically, we ended up with this new pattern of having something like six hours a week less than we had before. But we knew that the cost of that tech person, it wasn't mostly the, the hours worked, because that was only six hours. It was the fact that a full-time person becomes eligible for full benefits. And while that didn't affect healthcare expense, of course, being eligible for the retirement program was the major addition. So we're recognizing that. We're recognizing that it certainly has an impact going forward, but it's really making the library function very well.
What is that increase total?
About $17,000. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, but I didn't, I don't think it's that. Somehow I have in my mind $12,000 or something. Maybe that was just the retirement portion.
Maybe. Yeah, probably. I did the math when, I did the math back when we prepared the budget. And that's the number, that's the number that was calculated based on the summary of changes. Now, that's all the changes. That's a net impact of all the changes. So the pluses and the minuses.
Right. Because the 15-hour-a-week person we hired obviously doesn't receive benefits, and is at a lower salary than the other person, so.
Yeah. I mean, truth be told, in this Select Board, and many prior have, have had the discussion about the, those hours between 34 and, well, that one hour between 34 and 35 is a very expensive hour. And those hours between 34 and 40 are very expensive because of the benefit implications that it triggers. And we, we have to, at times, consider that added cost for things like retention and investing in employees, so we don't see consistent turnover. And so I think that's the discussion that the trustees had in, in making that decision over the summer. In talking with the library trustee chair, although the Select Board, and consistent with the memorandum of understanding between the Select Board and library trustees, the Select Board has every authority to make those changes to positions. The overlap with the Select Board is the preparation of the budget. The Select Board has the responsibility for proposing a budget to the voters. And I, I felt like for transparency for the community and for the Select Board, providing the details and discussion, and opportunity for discussion about these staffing changes, focused on retention and successful retention at that.
Yes.
For the last few months anyways, that it was important that that conversation was, was had at a Select Board meeting, and the Select Board had any of the questions they may have answered.
One of the challenges we have with staffing the library is the need to have a certain level of staff in the building at all times for security purposes. And during the week, that's less of a problem, because we have all those programs going on. So there's usually at least four people, if not five people, in the library. But the last year or two, we had to actually close a couple of Saturdays, because we could not, we were down to one person. You know, we were, it was being scheduled with like, if you only had two people scheduled on that day, and one called in sick, and you couldn't find anybody else to, to come in and fill in, then we didn't have enough people to keep the library open. So we basically have to have three people on staff. And the part-time person we've hired was hired with the proviso that she would be working every Saturday. So we don't need to make any motion with this?
No.
Just to understand what they were doing.
Yeah. And, and you, because you'll see it when you see the library budget.
It's going to be an important discussion only.
This will be an important discussion only because, you know, we certainly told taxpayers that they were not going to anticipate increases, and that movement of the combination of positions is certainly a $17,000 increase. So I don't.
It's not an increase in the number of staff or the hours.
No, I understand. It's an increase in cost.
Yes.
Every time you turn over an employee, you can expect to expend $7,000 to $8,000 in training dollars. So that's a talking point in reference to that. So if we continue to retain our employees, we can anticipate $7,000 to $8,000 a year in not training someone all over again. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, and I just want to say again, this has been a wonderful team effort, and the staff, as well as the trustees, have really appreciated the, the support we've had and the assistance, really, throughout the project from, from town staff as well.
Exciting project.
Success all around.
Yep.
20% increase in library funds.
Okay. We voted on the consent agenda as written, to not change it. Did we vote on the acceptance of it?
We did not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 17th, 2025 Consent Agenda A through H as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Maita Inshrek. Could I have roll call, please?
Semaco, aye. Capiello, aye.
Inshrek, aye.
Seco, aye.
Hardicoff, aye. Motion carries. Appointments.
Never heard of this guy's name before. Yeah, they keep all these people showing up.
So we had a couple of resignations from the Energy Committee, and there's two proposals. And I give a lot of credit to our new Chair, Cindy Hoisington, for recruiting members to join her and the rest of the Energy Committee. So you have, for discussion only tonight, an application for appointment from Roger Gingrich and Paul Nuzzi for joining the Energy Committee.
Exciting.
Both recommended by the Chair and the Energy Committee. And if there isn't any discussion tonight, you'll see them prepare, proposed for a vote on December 1st.
Very good.
Nuzzi would be an alternate, right?
Correct. Because we have the application soon.
Okay, moving forward. Staff report. Mr. McGyver.
Yes. November work anniversaries. John Janelle, our fearless interim fire chief, is 27 years.
Wow.
Fire Department in Barrington. Aaron Paradise, transfer station administrator, highway support assistant, 17 years, working for the town. Rick Smith, the fire department, 13 years. Terrence Glazier, transfer station attendant for six years, which I have to point out, we have been very fortunate, knock on wood, relative to turnover at the transfer station. That's a difficult position to fill and to hire for. We have a very dedicated team down there, Terrence being one of them. So credit to the, them and their leadership. Cameron Berry was hired as full-time police officer four years ago this month. Moving on, 2025 property tax rate has been set. You'll remember, in May, when the first issuance bills went out, we took great care in preparing a tax, an additional tax bill insert for residents, to give them an idea of what to anticipate with the tax rate set. This is because the dynamic in, in New Hampshire dictated by the state is that the first issuance bill is one-half of last year's total bill. And so a lot of times, the, the amount that you pay in the first issuance bill is actually a little bit lower than what you pay in the second issuance bill from the prior year. And so that's all made up for in your second issuance bill. And so we took great care in, in trying to prepare residents for what to expect. At that time, we estimated that the tax rate would be $19.61. The actual tax rate set is $19.56. Included in your printed packet and available online is the full DRA form for the tax rate, so you can see the full breakdown there. Also included in your printed packet is the finalized tax bill insert, which will be included in all tax bills this year. We included some of the same level of detail that we identified in the first issuance bill. We received a lot of positive feedback about that. I think it's important and consistent with the Select Board's strategic plan, that we help educate voters about how decisions are made, how money is spent, where money goes, et cetera. And so a lot of those details are addressed in this tax bill insert, along with updates from departments on the back. I also included in the Town Administrator Report a link to the first issuance bill, in case anybody is interested in reviewing that information as well. Any questions about that before we move on?
Yes, sir.
Terrific. Moving on, 2026 operating budget. So the Advisory Budget Committee has been meeting, meeting weekly. Meetings are available for virtual participation, in-person participation, and those recordings are available online. I've included the sets of minutes for the meeting since the last Select Board meeting. And what we anticipate at this time is that the December 1st Select Board meeting will be the initial recommendation from the Advisory Budget Committee on the operating budget and the warrant articles. They've made great progress and have some substantive recommendations for the Select Board to consider. And so we'll do that on December 1st. If necessary, the Select Board will continue that discussion on December 8th, and the Advisory Budget Committee meeting on December 3rd will be to review any additional requests for information. Anything on the budget process before we move on? Terrific. I included in your printed packet a copy of the third quarter financial analysis. I'm very proud to report that the town is comfortably within our budgeted expenditures, and we are at or ahead of schedule for our budgeted revenues. And so you'll see that 75% through the budget year, we've spent 72% of our budget, which is similar to 2024, where we had spent 73% of our budget. Moving on to the second page, you'll see that our expenditures by department are all tracking very close to prior years and at or below the 75% benchmark for three quarters of the way through the year. Roadways and walkways is that one budget category, which always varies quite a bit this time of year, based on how much paving we had accomplished by the end of September. So you'll see that that's 80% spent. We're 75% through the budget, but that's because of additional paving. On the revenue side, again, about 50% of the money that the town uses to operate its local government comes from non-property tax revenue. So we monitor this non-property tax revenue very closely. We're 75% through the year, and we've collected 68% of our revenue. I say that's ahead of schedule, because 25% of our revenue comes from the state, and the biggest portion of that, over $1 million, comes from rooms and meals tax, and we don't receive that until the fourth quarter. So we are ahead of schedule. And if you look at the column chart in the back of the fourth page, you'll see that our revenue collections are in line with prior years. And interest in penalties on delinquent taxes category, I elaborated on the narrative a little bit, but we saw that revenue drop off tremendously following COVID. And so we dropped our budget for revenue a lot as a result. So in 2023, you see that we collected 175% of our budget by that time. That's because we were budgeting much lower. You're looking at percentages of our budget estimate, not dollar amounts. So as our budget values increase for revenue, the percent collect, we want to see tracking pretty consistent. And you see that for the other revenue categories. But we've, we have since evened out for interest in penalties on delinquent taxes. Anything additional there? We'll move on to the financial audit. You have printed copies of the full financial audit for 2024, and you have a report from the Finance Administrator in the Town Administrator Report detailing the two findings, and I'll underscore again, two findings that the auditors had for the 2024 financials. We have, we impress our colleagues and any passerby's that are familiar with municipal budgeting and financial audits, with how clean our budgets are, the fact that we had a single audit two years ago with no findings. And so we have, we have a, an incredibly competent finance administrator who leads a terrific team, and the tax collector and the deputy tax collector that make up the finance office. The two recommendations relative to petty cash, reconciling the petty cash in the town clerk's office especially, but also elsewhere, and then library accounting. The library has funds outside. The library has funds outside of the town's operating budget, and so the auditors audit those funds as well, and they recommended that the library trustees invest in accounting software, which they are considering currently. So again, special recognition to the Finance Administrator for another job well done on the financial audit. Moving on, there is a civic open house at the middle school on December 3rd from 6:00 to 7:00. This is a first annual. I know that I sent out an invitation on behalf of Jeff Darrell, our very civic-minded middle school teacher and finalist for Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago. He's been a tremendous asset for Barrington Kids Vote and helping bridge that gap between civics and education. And so this is an initiative that he started. I will be there and certainly encourage, if any of you are available, to attend also and see the work of our middle schoolers relative to civics. Moving on, Lakeside Oaks Drive Culverts and Swains Lake Dam project update. So during, on the consent agenda, the Select Board approved the funding necessary for these projects. And at the November 10th meeting, the Select Board awarded the project to Daniels, Neil Daniels, who is the outfit replacing the old settlers' road culverts with a bridge. And so just a quick update, a couple of important notes. So this project is under the budget we anticipated for the scope identified. The Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert portion is pretty much on budget, a little bit ahead of budget and consistent with the FEMA funding that we have. The dam portion at $136,000 is less than we anticipated, and that has one very positive impact on the upcoming 2026 warrant. We had originally anticipated, based on the joint meeting with the Conservation Commission, to sponsor $190,000 warrant article to fund a portion of the Richardson Pond Dam. As a result of the cost savings that we have experienced in this project, we will have plenty of surplus funds in the dam repair and replacement capital reserve to fund that $190,000 and have additional funds available for, to start saving for future dam projects. So terrific news. We knew that it was possible. That's why we set as one of the items that the Select Board's capital reserve request would be reduced by any amount available. We didn't think it was going to be the whole amount. And so that is, that's terrific, and that's an $190,000 we don't have to ask voters for in March. Good news there. And again, because of the work we already did, no further decisions are necessary. We've already set it up, and we're on autopilot. We have new information, and we'll act accordingly. We talked a bit about the Madbury Lean Barrington Fire Collaboration Working Group. Obviously terrific joint meeting on Monday, the 10th. And included as links in the Select Board's packet is the meeting presentation and the strategic plan. And so the conclusion of that joint meeting was that the working group would continue working on the short-term goals through the end of this year and start working on the long-term goals in 2025. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the biggest of which, those long-term goals focuses on a regional fire district, but working up on the collaboration continuum and checking in as appropriate. So we anticipate a, an additional follow-up joint Select Board meeting sometime in late April, date yet to be determined, and the working group will start meeting again in the new year. And that's all, under Town Administrator Report.
Okay. Municipal Office of Administration, what do you have for us?
The only thing I have is a request for you Chair to initial mostly, the Office of Highway Safety Grant paperwork, and I apologize in advance, but remember, it is Chief Joyce's fault.
She said that because he left.
Right, right.
She wouldn't have said that with him in the room.
Do we have it with you, or do you want to? Okay, initial lease items. Gotcha. Very good. Okay, old business, Meeting House Road, shall we discuss?
We should. So a quick update, we've discussed this a few times. Unfortunately, this is a development project where the road has not been built to the standards or finished, for that matter, consistent with the Planning Board approved plan. And so Meeting House Road is a Class 6 road, connects Oak Hill with Smoke Street. Included in the printed packet and links available online, the approved subdivision plans, the letter that the town most recently sent to the developer and the developer's attorney urging them to present a plan to the town to meet with us and present a plan to address the deficiencies and make sure that the project was built to the approved plan. Included in that letter is email correspondence between the developer's engineer and the town's engineer acknowledging all the deficiencies, acknowledging and agreeing on the solutions to address those deficiencies. And so we were really hopeful over the last few years we'd be able to get that project finished as appropriate. We have not been successful in those efforts at this point. The, also included in the packet is a cost estimate from 2024 of what it would take to finish that road, and that's just under $400,000. So it's been six years since the approval. There's currently no layout petition to change the classification from a Class 6 to a Class 5. The developer has no plans to bring the road into compliance with the approved plan. And so the Select Board's asked to consider not changing the classification of Meeting House Road due to the current condition. We wouldn't accept a road in the condition that Meeting House Road is in based on the approved plans from the Planning Board.
Make a motion to keep Meeting House Road under its present Class 6 classification due to the present unfinished and deficient conditions.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Simakoi.
Kepi Loi.
Maitreesh.
Hardikahai, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Exemptions.
Yes, so we've discussed exemptions at a couple of meetings, exemptions and credits in advance of 2026 town meeting. And so on October 20th, the Select Board asked what might have contributed to the difference in income and asset limits for the elderly and disabled exemptions. Short answer is, nobody knows. I talked to the authority on exemptions and credits at the Department of Revenue Administration, and her best guess was that the elderly exemption is a statutory exemption in that every community has to offer one, and there are minimum limits established in statute for that exemption. Whereas disability is discretionary and can be adopted by a community, and obviously levels be set there. It doesn't explain everything because the elderly exemption minimums in the statute are still pretty far from where the averages are across the county and the state. So it just seems to be something that is the average. You know, the average is different. So where we left off was there was a proposal from the Select Board Chair to consider increasing the disabled income limit from $30,000 to $36,000, which would match that of the elderly single income limit for the elderly exemption. And so I believe there is probably still motivation to present that article, but the request of the Select Board is to consider that and finalize any other changes you want to make.
Any motions? Any questions, comments, concerns?
I know I have no questions, comments, or concerns, but I do have a motion if nobody else has questions, comments, or concerns. I move that we place a question on the 2026 warrant, asking residents to increase the single disabled income limit from $30,000 to $36,000.
Second. Roll call, please.
Simakoi.
Kepi Loi.
Maitreesh.
Hardikahai.
Hardikahai, motion carries. Thank you. Up next, let's see, Brewster Road Extension Discontinuance of Warrant Article.
This is an interesting one. So I was very glad to be joined by Select Board Member Alex Simakho in a site visit to Brewster Road Extension off Scruton Pond Road to consider the property owner's request to, to the Select Board to sponsor a warrant article to discontinue that portion of the road. Now, you'll remember the Select Board's considered this before because when, during this most recent real estate transaction for this property, it was determined that the septic system was in the layout of the Class 6 road for this property. The Select Board gave permission for the septic system to stay there pending any need to use the road. But the property owner has, has said, you know, this is a Class 6 road that goes between my house and my barn, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. It leads to the Eisenhower River. There was a pedestrian bridge there, but now there's no bridge at all, and who knows how long it's been since there's been a vehicle bridge or anything that carries anything of any weight. And so in reviewing that request, my first concern was, based on our trail interconnectivity efforts, the crossing at the Eisenhower, the Eisenhower River in general proves a difficult hurdle for trail connectivity. There has been a pedestrian bridge there, and there seems to be motivation to get a pedestrian bridge back there, not only from the property owners, but also folks in the neighborhood and others. And so I, I felt like acting on behalf of the Select Board, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be worthwhile to just simply request a discontinuance of that road. And so I asked the property owner if they might consider providing a trail easement along their property and the river so that we could maintain access to that crossing point where the abutments are. And so that's where we met in the field, and we looked at that, and the property owner's willing to provide that trail easement. And so I have a map in the Town Administrator Report linked online. So you see that green section, that's the proposed discontinuous, discontinuation of Brewster Road Extension. The beginning of their driveway would actually still be a Class 6 road until it connects with the extension of Seavey Bridge Road, which is shown in red there, Berry Road historically. And there would still be a Class 6 portion from about 50 feet on their property side of the river, across the river over to where it connects to Brooks Road, that additional red line.
Okay.
That's still a Class 6.
It is.
So green would be discontinued.
Correct.
Red would still be Class 6.
Correct.
What's purple?
Purple is the existing Barrington Trail on the abutting property, which has a conservation easement on it, and so that's an existing trail. So, and this is where we are right now. So the, the proposal with this individual property owner would get us to the property line and close to that trail, within a couple hundred feet of that existing trail. Southeast Land Trust holds the easement, and two Barrington residents and property taxpayers own the property, and they both have some say in whether a trail is connected there. I have a meeting coming up, hopefully this week, with the property owners to discuss what that might look like. The, the property owners have some existing concerns with, that I recently learned about, with the use and misuse of the existing trail. So in the first instance, they were a little bit hesitant to consider a trail connection and an additional trail on their property. And so I want to meet with them and learn more about those concerns and learn what the town can do and Southeast Land Trust can do to address those concerns that they haven't been addressed previously. And it will give me an opportunity to broach the subject more specifically about a trail connection. I get the sense from the first conversation that there, there probably, there would probably be a financial component of an additional trail easement on their property for such a trail connection, and so I will learn that information. I, I would, with the Select Board's support, I would take whatever information I learned from that meeting and go back to the original requesting property owner and say, this is what it would take to make this trail connection happen. I think the question to voters is whether or not to discontinue the road. The question to the Select Board is whether or not to sponsor that article. And I think for the Select Board to sponsor that article without a guaranteed access to that river is.
Adverse.
Adverse.
Yeah.
And so I think if we have a, if we have a concrete plan in place where we secure access in perpetuity, public access in perpetuity along the river and to that crossing point, then that's something that the, the Select Board might consider supporting, but until we get there, maybe not. I don't know if you have additional context to add from our site visit?
I do. In the interest of full disclosure, I live on Brooks Road. I have walked this easement. I've walked the bridge before it fell down, and I have walked on this property. I'm conflicted because I recently attended a neighborhood potluck where lots of enthusiasm was shown for rebuilding the bridge. And who can we reach out to about rebuilding the bridge? Who might be stakeholders in getting a bridge, you know, back there because a lot of people in the neighborhood used it? I, I found it a little interesting that, in approaching the property from the other side, which I've never done, for the walk around the property, that there were no trespassing signs. Right where you would walk onto, yeah, right where you would walk onto the existing easement. I don't think we can take, I, I'm hesitant to support it without something that's absolutely concrete. I don't think we have that right now, and.
Does it say the landowner's name and phone number on the no trespassing signs?
I don't recall.
It does.
It does. Okay.
Properly, it's properly posted, and the, there are conservation easements on both of these properties. The conservation easement on the property the landowner Brewster Road goes through is not a public access conservation easement. It is just a conservation easement. Now, there is public access because of the Class 6 roads that go through two portions of the property. And the Barrington Trail, for its part, comes down Seavey Bridge Road through this property. And instead of going to their driveway, the property owners have agreed with the Conservation Commission and Trail Committee to have it come out just east of their driveway onto Scruton Pond Road. And you can see the signs kind of goes up over the hill. If you haven't ever walked, it's beautiful. The abutting property owner has a conservation easement held by Selt for their property, and that solidifies public access to that existing trail, but doesn't guarantee any future trails to be built. Now, it allows the property owner to grant trail easements and things in the, in the future. So both of these private property owners still have private property interests in their property that they can regulate in certain ways, like no trespassing or posted. But I think for the part of the Select Board's discussion, I suspect, but the point of bringing it up tonight, I suspect the Select Board isn't interested in supporting sponsoring an article for discontinuance if there isn't guaranteed access to this point in perpetuity.
Correct.
And so those conversations are in progress. Like I said, I'll meet with the abutting property owner, figure out what it would take, but this is an opportunity for the whole Select Board to weigh in and say, in order to sponsor a warrant article for discontinuing this portion of Brewster Road Extension, we would need to see guaranteed access from both property owners so that a trail could be built at some point in the future if a bridge goes in. Or if you have a different perspective or opinion or priority, let us know.
I don't think we need a motion on that, but are we in agreement that we would like to see full access before? Okay.
I just wanted to add one other thing because my property is right across the river from the Barrington Trail, and I understand what concerns I suspect that that property owner is going to raise because there has been an increase in motorized vehicle traffic on that trail, which is not permitted. So all I'm going to put out there is if you are making improper use of the trails in town that are so kindly made available to us, you are jeopardizing our ability to
Right.
continue to offer such things.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that's the update.
Thank you all. Report outs. Let's start with Alexandra Simakho.
The ZBA has not had a meeting since my last update. It will be this week, so updates to come.
Great. I'll take all your time because I have all kinds of updates. So the Planning Board's been meeting with the Town Center District Consultants. We met with them on October 30th to look at their recommendations for our vision of the Town Center and how that will affect zoning ordinances. And to make it happen, likely we will need to change some zoning ordinances. A field trip occurred last week where I wasn't able to attend, but other members went and visited projects around Dover that would give some insight into possible looks for this and how that might influence zoning. We met today for an hour at 5:30, and we have, you know, ongoing meetings to discuss it. So it's been a very busy time for a Planning Board. Planning Board also met November 4th for the application request by applicant to present a yield plan, the Sergeant Meadows, which is the Coots Farm, and that's for 79 duplexes, which is 158 units. And after a very long meeting with 14 of the abutters represented by an attorney that they had hired, the Planning Board, major concern was the amount of wetland impact. So this yield plan would require a number of 9.6s, which is the ordinance around wetlands. And I felt like the impact, particularly at prime wetlands, was, we thought it made the application technically not feasible, and there was a unanimous vote to not approve the yield plan. So we'll see what the next step is. There's a, separately, a septic ordinance steering committee that met for the first time on November 3rd with Lisa Murphy of Stratford Regional Planning Commission to hear what residents thought about our current septic ordinances around our lakes, what kind of changes we wanted. what kind of changes we wanted. And then she'll take that input, work with Ernie, the Planning Board Administrator, for a draft. So that will take a couple of months before the committee meets again. There's been a new committee that we've talked about in the past about linking our trails with history that has occurred in those areas. So that committee has been meeting, I think we've met three times already. So there's a lot going on there. And from that, we had a conversation around signage in town and the need for consistency of signage and branding. And that committee met today at 4 o'clock. So a lot's been happening.
Your turn, sir.
You see the ABC minutes. There's a meeting Wednesday. Heard the library report. There's a meeting tomorrow. School Board's continuing to do their budgeting. I think they met today. That's what the thing said, although they usually meet on Tuesday. But I'd rather come here.
Okay.
Well, the regional fire, regionalization for fire, we had the meeting last Monday, went really well. I thought it was well taken by residents and other people in the room. And I think there's a lot of exciting things to come, more meetings to come. I'm sure the team is going to give the same great effort. And the Chiefs have been doing a bulk of it and really knocking it out. So props to them. Also for Parks and Rec, the gym is back open for use for youth basketball and adult basketball and pickleball. And there will be a bonfire on the pit in the Barrington Common at the soiree on December 5th.
How fun. Okay. So you heard from the Energy Committee that they received their Soul Smart Award. And we as a town have done a good job in encouraging renewable energy sources. They are also looking at and evaluating each of the town properties and reaching out to those decision makers to see what other properties might be able to use solar and reduce the cost to the residents in the budget each year. The Conservation Commission met. They had approved a letter that CELT had asked them to approve in reference to grant request on the Ayers Isenglass Preserve project. They are indicating that they would like a violation notice to go out on a Castle Road wetlands violation. They tabled or postponed the lake invasive species funding proposal. They are requesting enforcement action on a property that abuts the Temposi property. Made comment in reference to the Brewster Road Extension. I think very much in keeping with us from an exploration standpoint, they'd like another commitment for movement on that property. There was a tree stand violation that they had noted. And the Homeowners Association in the area of the tree stand took action. We have a list of cases that they're watching, one being the Coots Farm in reference to sensitive wetlands. And there were sightings of bobcats and baby opossums in Barrington. I always love the update of the animals. And if anybody needs a turkey for Thanksgiving, there is a group of 24 to 26 that keep living in my backyard and driving my Bernese mountain dog crazy. Please take them out with an arrow should you come on my property. I think that's about it. Do we have need for non-public?
We do. Personal reputation and legal.
Well, motion to exit the public meeting at 8:25, enter non-public for purpose of, say it again?
Personal reputation and legal.
Personal reputation and legal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
It's Amoco. I have the yellow eye.
Hardicoff eye.
We back on?
Yes.
Okay, welcome everyone back to the Select Board meeting on November the 17th. At this time, we would like to open up our second public comment. If you're in line and you'd like to, if you're in person. And I'd like to close public comment. In reference to personnel and what were the other two issues?
Reputation and legal.
Reputation and legal. We'd like to seal the minutes.
No need to seal the minutes.
No need to seal the minutes. Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Rokel.
Aye.
Aye.
Hartikov, aye.